Shoeben door.
Good evening. I'm here again now to see if we can, see if you guys will approve us purchasing financial software that hasn't been upgraded in quite some time. First of all, we were meeting again because I was hoping to save us $5,000 and I ran into a little problem once I got the contract. So, I noticed that they were missing two modules. One of them was going to be for our agendas, board agendas, board packets, and board meetings. The other one was an HR module. I looked back at my proposal, it wasn't on the proposal as well. So, I contacted Tyler, see what we could do about it, and they were willing to negotiate. So, the two modules that we missed would run us about $25,000 more over a five-year period. What I negotiated with them is for it to only be $5,000 more over the five-year period. They're just going to charge us for training on it instead. So, I told them that I needed to bring that to the council before any decision's going to be made on it.
Tell me again what the two modules were?
One of them was the board packets, the board agendas, and the board minutes. The other one was a human resource module.
That's probably an important one.
Right.
Both sound quite important.
But, they were wanting to get this done by June 30th. They say if we wait till July 1st, it's going to be an additional $20,000, $25,000 more.
Is June 30th perhaps their, the end of their fiscal year?
I think it might be the end of the quarter there. They're really trying to get this taken care of, but before June 30th, or by June 30th.
So, if I understand this correctly, it's 1,000 per year based on what otherwise was going to be?
It was going to be $4,000 per year over the next five years, plus 5,000 in training.
No, no. What we looked at the last time was $50,000 a year.
It was, right, almost, it was almost 52.
52. So, this is now going to be 53?
No, it's going to be 52 still.
Oh, I thought it was going to cost additional.
Where's that other?
The other $5,000 is training, which we would have to pay next year sometime. So, training isn't part of the subscription agreement where they, we pay on an annual basis. When the work is done, we pay them at that time. So, instead of running the 109,000, I think it's, or 119, it's closer to 114,000.
So, we didn't have training in what we saw before? We did?
We did, yes.
But now they're charging us for the training?
Just an additional $5,000 for the additional training for these extra two modules.
For those two modules?
The cost of the two modules.
Right.
I understand.
So, there's no software costs for the modules, there's just additional training?
Just additional training costs.
Well, I, you know, this, June 30th, I, as much as I hate a car salesman telling me, "What is it going to take to get me in that car today?", you know, I don't like that kind of stuff, but I recognize that there are time limits to certain things. I think that maybe had we had a better system in place before we went to the estimated billing, that might have alleviated a lot of problems that many of our people, my mother-in-law included, have had to endure with regard to those added expenses and the things. Discounting, the most obvious and the most glaring being the benefit to staff and the efficiency and what we're trying to do. I'm not going to pretend to be a budget wizard, but looking at the numbers that I saw the other night, I'm thinking, now is as probably as good a time as any to do it, and I would support it.
Mr. Yarda, I mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I went, I went through this and, you know, I don't know a lot about reading about contracts, so I actually asked Jay and Era if they would come this evening to speak. This company doesn't have a good track record, are you aware of that?
I, they have over 2,000 customers and, you know, I don't know where you're getting it that they don't have a good track record. I know of one problem that they had with a utility company that ended up political, is what I was told, and that they were doing everything that they needed to do to get it straightened up, they just weren't given the time to do it.
That kind of parallels with a question I had for you, and have you talked with any of the other city administrators who are utilizing this product, and how satisfied are they with it?
Everyone, I went to a meeting last week for government financial officers' information, and what I talked to was a couple of people that are using it up there as well, and they were extremely happy with it. They were saying, "We don't have any wake time for our, any kind of problems that we have whenever they have to call in for help." They said they get it immediately. They said it's a wonderful product, and they wouldn't have any problem recommending it to us.
And if I recall correctly, Raton uses this as well as Los Anamos County and Pueblo? Any discussions with any of those folks?
I did talk to the one, to Los Anamos County, and actually I talked to Kristi again today, and she was saying, "No, it does do what we need, we just need to watch for a couple of things, and when you get to that point, let me, let me know, and we'll talk about it then." But it's just a matter of when you put dates in the system, is what she was saying. I talked to the finance person in Raton as well about it, and they said, "No, it works really good, we don't, we don't have any problem with it as well, so..." And they do have their utilities on it as well, so I, I really think that Tyler is a reputable company, and I think they will handle anything that we have, that we need done here.
A track record like what?
I would just, I would just ask that if you would allow them to speak just a moment.
Sure, come on.
And the reason that I did ask them questions, because I know that they do this kind of work, and they had proposed some things to the city, but for some reason they don't, they just, I don't know.
Um, we actually found several court cases, and they do different types of modules and different types of software. Some of them seem to be more successful than others, and some of their clients seem to do better than others. The only thing that I find scary is, when you look at the way that they handle issues, they had written in one of the statements to the newspaper that anytime you build something new, there's going to be glitches and bugs. Well, what we have to realize, by using a company that's outside of the state, every time there's an issue, you're going to have to pay to bring them here, and it's not going to be cheap. As for training, how many of the people do you think on staff here are going to be able to handle two days of training? Did you look at how they're expecting you to enter the data or convert it over? Who here is capable of doing that? They're relying so much on you guys, and in the way that they have everything set up, if you look through their website, if anything goes wrong, it's going to be your fault. It was just kind of scary for me. We do a lot of work like this. In fact, if we took on a contract like this, we'd work with like MPI, a big company that we work with out of Florida, and of course, an accounting firm. We wouldn't have done anything like this on our own, and we had put in a proposal to do the same very thing, probably nine months ago, to Mr. Aker. I don't know if you guys ever saw it?
No.
Yeah. We had, almost everything that they had put, we had put. We didn't go into detail because we didn't know what you needed. We'd been waiting for this RFP for quite a while. We thought we were going to be contacted, at least to put in a bid. Whether we get it or not is neither here nor there, life is life, but we would have liked the opportunity. But the only thing that scares me is the responsibility, how much responsibility is on Trinidad. I'm here every day, I'm helping people every day with their software, with their websites, with their Facebooks, and I know how much training it takes, and I really don't think that somebody who isn't local or willing to have somebody here is going to be able to do it. Because you guys are not just getting a payment system, you're getting a full syst-, there's a lot of bells and whistles on that, and people need to be able to use it. But, so that's all we found. When looking them up, yes, there's a lot of people very unhappy, but I really think it's just because they couldn't handle the systems, the training didn't work out for them, or it was a particular new module, especially schools. Like, they had a school where all the records were disappearing, the grades, and then reappearing. They're having problems with their server information being backed up. See, I wouldn't even use servers, servers are the past. You use an Amazon cloud-based storage, then you don't have that worry.
I thought we were told it was cloud-based.
Is it? Because they were having so many issues.
Yeah. Because that was the hosted versus server.
Right, we're talking about the hosted.
We looked at those two.
Okay. Because they had like three or four different.
We went for the hosted.
Oh, that's good. But even their prices is a little bit high. Everything that we found about them, just, to me, it seems like it's, it doesn't fit Trinidad, that's my personal opinion, and they don't, I don't feel that they would have the small-town care. I really don't think that they're going to come here and personally train people, and if they did, it's going to be very expensive.
Did you consider the proposal?
I didn't know anything about them being able to do this type of thing.
You know, people live here, and we don't contact them to see if they, I asked you this morning if you put it out on bid, and you said, "No."
We contacted several of the companies that we thought would work with us the best. Casell is another one that is used throughout the state. Tyler is another one that's used throughout the state. We contacted them, we also contacted ADG. They came and gave us a proposal as well, they're out of Denver, but they were not, the ADG was more of a lateral movement than a great, so we were wanting to do, get somebody that could do total, totally everything in their own.
How do you know they can't?
Who's that? I didn't know they could even do that.
If I may, Mr. Yarda?
Sure.
You know, I'm not putting a plug in for Jay and Era here, but going to the I-25 corridors meetings and stuff like that, I have seen, actually seen, the work that these two people have done. And, I'm not a computer whiz right now, I don't intend to be a computer whiz, but what they have done, and what I have seen, is great. It's really great. And to me, I don't know if Mr. Downs there had the opportunity of really reading this contract with the short time period that we, we had to do this. And I, I'm in agreement with Anthony, yeah, you know, it's kind of a hard pill to swallow on a time period, and I know these big companies have time periods to do this, but to me, in my gut, my gut's feeling is saying, you know, don't rush into things. When you rush into things, we have a problem. And I know we need an update on this computer stuff, we needed it last year, two years ago, or whatever it is. But I really, the way I'm feeling right now, if it takes a no vote for me to save the city $5,000 and be wrong, or do I have a yes vote and save the city, you know, I mean, a no vote to save the city $250,000, you know, I'd feel better on that. But we, I think this is a shot in the arm that we were looking for. We're talking about marijuana stuff, bringing in economy and stuff like this, and this is not a shot in the arm for Jay and Era, it's just the point that they're local people, they do a fantastic job, I think that we should give them a chance and look at what they could do, and there's another part, a good thing about it, maybe they could add another 40 or 50 jobs.
If I may?
Yes, sir.
What other entities have you served in like software? With all due respect to the presentation you make, it does do a disservice to Tyler to have you as a competitor come up and shoot their bid.
Especially since I put my proposal in a year before they were ever contacted.
It does do a disservice, my point was, it does do a disservice to Tyler to have a competitor come up and assassinate their proposal.
You can look at it yourself.
Will you allow me to continue, please? From my own experience, I know where my wife works, their software and their work, their support work comes from FPS Gold in Utah. They have training, they have webinars, my wife and two employees just got back from a training. They can do things out of state, okay? I think that it's a disservice to our staff to think that they can't grasp the training in two days. I think that it's an assault on their character and their mentalities. They're able, they're intelligent people.
I think that you're being a little bit rude, sir.
Allow me to finish, please. I believe they have the qualities capable to make them good students to acquire the information in the training. The part that I'm particularly offended by, or take affront to, is that a competitor is yet to assassinate Tyler. If that's the case, we should have a representative of Tyler to refute whatever your presentation is.
It should have been put out to bid.
And to express their concerns about what your kind of work is all about.
Well, it never got even.
Hold on a minute, hold on a minute. I'm offended because they weren't contacted and put a bid in.
This was our idea.
We don't want them to do that kind of work, different?
Yes, everybody, we've been putting in a bid for two years for this.
Let me tell you something, you gotta, you gotta see what they've done.
Yeah.
I've been the I-25, they can connect with anybody in the state.
We've been working with cities and counties and organizations outside of here, other states.
Tell me about your financial planning software, what do you have available?
We just built one for Florida, we have.
That's not what I asked you. Tell me about what you have to offer the city of Trinidad in financial software such as being reported.
You know what, it's very simple.
I'm listening.
Well, you need a processor, first of all, you don't want to lose a lot of your money. Second of all, you have to keep track of your records, you have to be able to do your data and your spreadsheets. You don't know anything about us. In fact, if we could put in the RFP, you'd have a lot more hold on it, and the portion that we build of it versus our partners is different. If you want to talk to my financial partner who builds that part with his team, he's a whole, it doesn't take one person. It's not me that would be building the software, it is me and a whole team of people.
Who are your, who are your people?
We work with MPI, we work with Itranware, which is local, he's actually in Homie, and his other partners are in Florida. There's a lot of local companies here that do work all over that you guys, I'm sure, don't even know about. We like to live here.
Jay, you got something to say?
And you know what really upsets me, is I've put this in over and over for two years, I'm the one that turned in a whole paper to the city saying that over 20 different federal violations that are being committed on the website. We're the ones that have been doing the research for two years. This whole proposal that they turned in, a very similar, it was just basically an outline, but a very similar thing was turned in almost a year ago, and we never even got a call to put in an RFP. All I'm saying is there should have been an RFP. And I'm not saying Tyler is bad, I'm not, and I'm not calling people stupid. What I'm saying is, you only know what your experience is. When I first went to college, I didn't even know how to load a disk in a computer. It took me longer to catch up than somebody else.
I'm only asking questions that she was asking me, Joe.
Let her finish.
Yeah, this was a waste of our time.
They approached the city in 2011, and you know, Tom, I don't think you've really been fair to them. He tells me that he came, and you said the last time you didn't get an email?
Crap.
And he took it to you and handed it to you the last time, and you still haven't talked to him about it. Why are you so adamant about not giving them local people stuff?
On this particular software application, I left it to Lonnie to look after, and look for folks that have done this and have got a track record.
I understand that, but.
If you want us to.
Local, local people.
Not local when they come in and make a presentation as they just did.
I know, but they weren't contacted to even make a presentation.
And, and what they submitted is garbage.
It wasn't a presentation, it was an assassination of Tyler's presentation.
And assassination of council members.
And they weren't here, they weren't here to defend themselves or to explain it.
With Tyler in code, they have over 2,000 cities and municipalities that they have installed this software on. Cities and municipalities that are using the software on a daily basis. This isn't one that's just being thrown together and put together at one time or another, just by people that can come in and build it. This is already well-tested, well-used program that we are trying to get into our system.
Okay, do you really know that they can do this?
I haven't heard of them having cities and municipalities, or schools, or anybody else like that, that they cater to specifically. These programs that we're talking to are highly specific, and they have a track record, they're proven what they can do. The next person, the next company that we were looking at was Casell Software. Casell was actually going to cost us about $100,000 more over a five-year period, okay? So, is this a low, is this a high price? Well, yeah, the software is high-priced, but it is still $100,000 less than the next, I believe, company that would, would suffice what we're doing as well, so.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
I'm reading through this, and I know a little bit about software, and I've run companies where I've had to deal with vendors of software, where, you know, I do it now, my payment system at the liquor store is managed out of, on the East Coast. It seemed, I'm reading this first sentence, I don't know if you got a copy of this, it says, "We first approached the city of Trinidad in 2011 about the serious issues with the city of Trinidad's website, payment and data systems." I can remember, you know, hearing about the website, because I think they had done some work for economic development on their website. All I remember talking about is the website. It seems to me that a website is different than what we're talking about.
It is totally different than what we're talking about. The website, you're just putting information on, on their website, and people are able to look at. This one has so many different processes, so many different modules on it that would, that are all in their one house.
It's not an Excel spreadsheet, right?
It's not an Excel spreadsheet, we don't want to do anything with Excel spreadsheets. We want to try and get away from that as much as possible. We're not going to be able to get totally away from it, but it's just going to be supplementary things that we do with it, it's not going to be the main, main thing that we, we work with.
Mr. Mayor, and I'm sorry, I just want to say that one other thing, and I just want to comment on what just happened, and that is, when they departed council chambers, they being Jay and Era McCarthy and Mr. Sanist, you know, I believe is in our employ, the last words out of their mouths to you are, "You'll be hearing from our lawyer." And then I heard, excuse me, Mr. McCarthy say to Ms. McCarthy, "I know they suck." So, I'm sorry, whatever issues you may have notwithstanding, I think if they were otherwise in the mix or consideration for your employ on this project, that their behavior after that exchange should probably eliminate them, and I don't mean to be hysterical, but I all, I am all about comportment and civility when people address you. So, if they were otherwise, if they, if they were in the mix, and if they should have been, or if they were not, their, their behavior upon departing council chambers, I respectfully submit should probably cause them to not be considering, at least for this project. And again, I don't, I don't mean to keep score, just it wasn't very nice, and I know emotions weren't really kind of hot, I just wanted to, wanted to comment on that.
I just, I just have a question, Mr. Mayor, if I can. I think I asked you, Mr. Downs, where, when I directed it, or asked if you read this contract, did you fully read this contract?
I did, I did.
Really?
Absolutely. I did, and, and if I could counsel you, but I did read this contract, and Mr. Medina had, and he said, "I need you to read it right away," and it's urgent, and I did, and there were a few things that concerned me, like Subparagraph 1.4, limitation of liability, it's almost an indemnification clause for Tyler. But I did, I read this, and I think, while I too am not a software, you know, everything they're seeking to do here, we're seeking to do here, the contract seems fine, and they provide a lot of services and a lot of support. And again, I don't, I don't mean to sound like I'm lobbying or helping Mr. Medina, you know, taking a position, but I did read it, and it seems like a very appropriate contract, especially for something this magnitude.
And it isn't just a couple of days of training, they have over 500 hours of training to go into this, so, and it is a substantial amount of training that.
So, when they do come here, we have to pay for their lodging, their meals, their...
Right, we will have to pay for their lodging, yes.
But it sounds like a lot of these also don't work well.
Yes, they will be able to, to log into our computers to work with anything that we need done as well.
That's exactly how I operate.
Right.
They do a lot of webinar, webinar training.
They call them up, remote assistants, they come on, they take over your computer, they diagnose what's wrong. I just wanted to finish something I started to say before. This history about, I think they're two different things. A website is different from a payment system process. I wouldn't go to my payment system people and tell them to design me a website, they would probably look at me and fight. We don't do that. Nor would I go to a web designer to design my payment system. So, I kind of look at this history, and it seems a little disjointed to me. But I do want to ask a question about what the requirements are for bid process, because I want to understand the legal issues here, without we getting ourselves.
Yeah, that's why I asked them.
What are the, what are the exact requirements? Do you have to post it?
$50,000 and over would have to go to a formal bid process unless there's an exception for standardization and compatibility on it. And I believe we would probably fall under the standardization and compatibility because every software company is different. And somebody coming in to build us a software could be $100,000 less, but they don't have the experience or the know-how to actually come in and put a system together like this. So, I, I believe we would fall under the exception of the compatibility or the standardization.
Do we know they can do it?
Again, I wouldn't, if they don't have a proven track record where they've been doing municipalities like this, there would be no way I would recommend anybody like that.
Okay, on the other side of this coin, I see a lot of animosity in this whole thing. I've worked with thousands and thousands of people, a lot of them I didn't like, but if they could do the job, I didn't have to like them.
I, I agree. Again, I'm looking at the track records of the companies that have 2,000 municipalities or other nonprofit agencies that they're working with currently. It's not one that they're going to go in and build a program from the bottom up and work it that way, it's already in place, it's already proven to be working, working, and people are using it on a daily basis. It's not anything that's going to be put together as they go along.
I'll also throw in just my perspective, which is, I've been operating this software for only three years, and there have been nine updates to the software. And prior to my use of the software, there are probably 70 updates to the software, based upon people calling in and them realizing that there's some small glitch that needs to be tweaked, or someone requesting an improvement. There's a big difference between building one system and, and running 2,000, would be my statement.
I agree.
There's a lot to be said.
I think the point to be made here is that, just because somebody's local, and I'm not here to lobby for Jay and Era, I want everybody to know that. I've just done a lot of work with them, I've listened to a lot of the projects that they've been on, they're not stupid, they're not, and they, I don't think they came here to attack Tyler. They just came here to make a point, because this same thing that you're looking at, they've offered, or put a proposal in.
I don't know anything about a proposal.
But it, why, why, and you've said this before, he showed me the copy of the email that he sent you.
The proposal they gave us was really, "We'll develop whatever you want." But like Lonnie said, and I agree with him, they don't have a proven track record to do this type of work.
How do you get it to a proven track record?
Well, I think what we got to do is, we got to go with someone, as Lonnie says, who has 2,000 municipal customers and already has a program and a system in place, as Michelle has just mentioned, that is updated regularly and is, but what Era began to present, she just went through a list about all the bad things about Tyler. And then I asked her, "What do you have to present?", and she had nothing, and then...
Well, she should have gave the copies that she had.
She hands me this, and this doesn't say a damn thing about anybody's ability to do anything, it's just like two kids in a playground throwing barbs at each other back and forth. This is worse, this is the paper it's written on. What I mean to say is, we have a lot at risk here, we're spending a lot of money, and I think we got to go with somebody that we know can do the job, has 2,000 customers, is willing to do it, and from my experience in my wife's training, and she's been there for almost 40 years, working with FPS Gold, they have webinar training, and this is a different thing, but it's similar. These large companies, they have webinar trainings, my wife and two relatives and two other employees just got back from a three-day training in California. And, and yes, Joe, they do come here for, they have to do things, and you have to pay the expenses, but that's just what you do, and...
That's with any company.
Yeah, you know, and she's saying that they're going to bid $200,000 above their bid, okay, so we're paying, what, $200,000 over several years?
Right. Right.
And they're proposing less than that, so what are we going to get for $40,000 or $50,000 from them? I don't think we're going to get the product that we need, we want, and we expect to do what the city's trying to do.
I think we need to stay with a professional group that has a good, long track record.
Ms. Tara, you're squirming in your seat.
No, Tom, that is Kim's.
Okay, I thought it was yours.
When, and I'm not going to say if, but when we decide and we go after to update the website, I'm hands down asking them to be involved any type of RFP process or old process. So, because I've got nothing against them despite what's on this piece of paper, which I don't think I ever said, I want that in there, that I've got no issue working with them, like, unlike they're trying to claim. It's the fact that what we were looking for was specific software, and I don't think they've got that track, they don't, I know they don't have that track record.
But you know, even when they come here, I always get the feeling that they're not really accepted in this arena.
Welcomed.
Or welcome. I get that feeling, not from them, but just the way they're treated.
Well, a large part of it is the way to handle this.
Well, I understand that, but they're young kids.
Okay. But that's my point. Do we want two young kids who walk out of a meeting in a frustrated anger and tell me that I'll hear from their lawyers and tell me that I suck?
And you're asking me, and you're asking me that?
Or do we want, do we want a professional company who has a proven track record, 2,000 customers?
I understand.
And they know what they're doing.
Now, Tom...
And I'm like Tom, I'm all about helping local people when they have the ability and the capabilities to do what we need, but sometimes you just can't get it done. I need open-heart surgery too, but I go to the local doctors, I'm sure as hell not going to do it. I'm going to an expert someplace.
I think now, Tara...
In 2011, the Tourism Board put out an RFP for a marketing company. NJ and Era, under the name Merge Media, submitted a wonderful presentation. There were seven submissions, they were rated by a panel of five. I sat on as the Welcome Center, Kim Schultz as the chamber, and three tourism boards, they were ranked third, probably from lack of experience, because this was kind of their first thing to come forward with the city. The contract was awarded to Hasards, which is also a local, but the Tourism Board hasn't put out for an RFP again, so I'm sure that when Tourism puts out for an RFP again, Jay and Era will have experience which they did not have several years ago now. Obviously, that is up to the Tourism Board to rank and decide, but that, the things that they presented in their presentation were great, but they warn us of a financial software matter. There were these wonderful things about virtual geoskes that create like virtual images and different things they could do with informational signs around town and QR codes before really QR codes were even popular, so.
Mr. Vannaro.
I didn't present a presentation.
No, Mr. Yorda, it's just, you know, I hate to sit up here as a city councilman and like you say, just keep feeding the same horse, but, you know, I'm, I'm not really satisfied with any type of company or something like that, or, or hurry-up decision. I don't like hurry-up decisions. I like to make damn sure that I'm doing the right thing. And in the day and a half that we had or what we had here, it, it's just a forced deal to push things through.
I think that's why we have staff that knows what they're doing, and we have to have confidence in that part.
But it's up to this council to, to make a decision, and I, and I just don't feel...
And the counter side to that, to that coin is, yes, and I, I mentioned my point earlier, I hate talking to car salesmen when they tell me I got to do it today. But at the same time, when an opportunity presents itself, you've got to seize the moment. You know, you, you can't be dragging your feet about things.
Well, we could be here all day, let's...
Can I have...
Go ahead.
...a few questions? Lonnie, have you ever personally worked with this system?
No, I haven't.
And in your opinion, is the contract sufficient to cover the assistance needs from the company without numerous additional charges?
I believe that they, this is their business, they know approximately how much time it takes them to come in and train the people that they're giving this software to or selling the software to. I believe that we will fall within range of what they say it's going to cost to get this training done.
And my last question is, we know where the $50,000 is coming from for this year and the $50,000 for next year, but we also have to pay this $118,000 next year. Do we know where that's coming from?
That would again come from all five different funds as well, and we would split that out to where each one pays their, their share of it. So I'm thinking probably around $25,000 or so each, somewhere in that neighborhood to pay for it next year as well. So they would each have to come up with about $35,000 next year.
Okay, remember, keeping in mind what I tell the contractors when they come here to give us a bid, I say, "Don't stand there and tell me what you're going to do until you open that heart and get in there. The doctor doesn't know what he's going to see." So that complicates things too.
Well, with, the thing with theirs though, is they're hosting theirs on their end.
That's fine.
They're, they're putting it all on their computer systems. All we're doing is getting the training and learning how to do it on our computers. So it's not like we're having to deal with hardwares or network issues. It's, it's all taken care of in the cloud on their end.
So they're essentially coming and showing, putting up the equipment and training staff on how to do the data input?
Right, how to put data input. That's basically all it's going to be.
Mr. Draker.
I've talked to the county administrator, she's used this software and they're very happy with it. In fact, when their finance director left and they had to bring someone new onboard really quick, the company was very good about getting her up to speed. If their former finance director, there were some things that he didn't quite understand, they were really helping him get him up to speed as well. So I think, I think they've got a good tracker, and I've heard of them before. Just lost my head, I apologize, but, so, you know, I support, of course, that we do look at this software.
They also do have a thing called Tyler U on it, like you were talking about, Tyler University. And basically, what it is, is it's a training place for you to get onto their website and get continuing professional education if you want that as well. But they have courses online to go over things that if we're having trouble, we can look at it and go through it that way to learn how to do more of the, the modules as we go along. So it's not just them coming in, training us and leaving us, they're going to give us modules to actually look before they even come in. So we will be going over those modules before they come to train so that we'll have some sort of understanding what we're getting into before they actually show up.
Motion for acquisition.
Mr. Mayor, I, I moved that we accept the proposal for Tyler as presented by Mr. Medina, and the contract is having been reviewed by Council Downs and proceed with the purchase of this, this software.
Second.
Hold on, sure.
I just want to be sure about, Lonnie talked about, Mr. Medina talked about exceptions to the bid process. Are we affirmed around there, or are we not affirmed around there?
I will tell you, I, I don't, I don't have an opinion as to whether we're confirmed. I did not know, and I, I will be honest with you, I did not know there was a deviation from the normal bidding process, and so, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we have till Monday?
We, we could look into that.
Let's do that, let's go, let's put this on hold and we can always call another meeting, let's be right.
Or, I mean, what they, we did have three firsts on the bid process, it's not like...
But it wasn't advertised.
That's, that's the point.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you want to hold off?
And then they have to correct what they're offended at.
We want to, I, I want to hold, I want to hold off until we're clear legally. Once we do that...
So we'll have another meeting? Is that what I'm hearing?
Sure.
Monday after work?
And, and it'll be a five-minute meeting? We thought this was going to be 15.
Yeah, wasn't another one that said this?
Yeah, you did. Next time, don't make it.
Did I make one other suggestion?
Go ahead.
Since we heard all these negatives, negatives against Tyler, would they be available by phone to...
You should get the copies that they have.
I'm sorry?
You should get the copies that, that they have.
You're going to have that with every, every company that, when people aren't satisfied, it's going to happen everywhere.
They could even review it by Skype, we could even do that on Skype.
If, if you make a purchase on eBay, you're going to be, you're going to see the seller's history, and very few people have 100% positive.
What are they going to say?
There's always going to be some negative.
What are they going to say?
And they have a reason to, to be negative. I, you know, I'm going to say, they weren't scheduled to be in a meeting, they showed up at apparently your behest as a request, and a courtesy to them, we're willing to listen to what they're saying, and it explodes, and then they'd even tell me, "I suck." I, I just don't like that. And maybe I do, but I don't want to hear it from them.
We may, can you find out if Monday evening works for Tyler?
12 o'clock midday when the clock strikes 12.
We just have to fax a copy to them. But I agree...
We have never, we've never met on Sunday afternoon. Yet. We might as well do that.
Did we want to start that? No?
Let's, let's put it on hold until we get some...
I think you have a motion and a second.
That's why we have a, I'm sorry...
I withdraw my motion if it's necessary.
Withdraw the second.
Motion to put it on hold until we get cleared legally.
So, so are we essentially tabling this until Monday?
Yes. Or, or if we can get it done sooner, we still have tomorrow.
Well, you don't have the meeting time.
24-hour notice.
I'd make a motion to table this issue until Monday at 5:30.
Second.
Second.
Roll call.
Bolton?
Yes.
Vannaro?
Yes.
Mate?
Yes.
Miles?
Yes.
Tars?
Yes.
Freeira?
Yes. Consideration 2014-15 Colorado Welcome Centers, you have two minutes.
Oh, I can do this in, I can do this in 30 seconds. Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. The contract has only changed slightly since last year. There were just a few changes. One, it changed from eight meetings for volunteer traveler counselors to six. We're holding 12, so we're, we're meeting those requirements. Other than that, oh, it added an additional informational study tour for travel counselors up to two a year, and we're already doing that. So those were the only two changes. The financial information's the same. The state will be providing, the city of Trinidad was $64,278 to manage the Welcome Center, that's the same as last year. The city will be matching out of the general fund, $17,500 to the Welcome Center, which is the same as last year. That also provides the documentation for the match on the Best and Brightest internship. Although the numbers aren't in, we will come in under budget this year. We finished up all the financial stuff today, so...
Great.
We're going to be about $5,000 under budget this year, so...
Great.
So it did end up costing the city $17,500 more, like $12,500, but we need to budget $17,500 as the, because that is the match for the Best and Brightest. Okay?
Questions?
Any questions?
I'd make a motion for approval of the 2014-15 Welcome Center statement of work between the city and the Colorado Tourism Office.
Second.